It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 15th. I'm gonna call this regularly scheduled Sikeboard meeting to order. Are there any citizen comments? Okay. So for additions to and deletions from the posted agenda, we are having some continued discussion on the Peterkin Hill. Is Tommy in the room?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. We have a manager's report here momentarily. Do I don't have it with me? Zoe gave us some before, but I never had.
Yeah.
Oh, you may. Oh, maybe you guys don't have them.
We don't have those.
No.
We did. It worked. Oh.
I don't know.
There you go.
Thank you.
Got them now.
Got them now. So we are on to manager's report.
Oh, you are.
We do the first.
All right. I think the only thing on my report is that we have hired a public works director and he is gonna start either the 28th of this month or December 5th. He's trying to establish some housing and that's what determining his start date. And that's all I have.
Okay. Does he have a name?
He does, but I texted him earlier today to see if he has yet informed his employer. He said he only needed to give him a two-week notice. So I don't know that he's done that.
What was not?
He's in, lives in the region, but he's not super local.
What was, what was the other? You said either December 5th or November 28?
28.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much. So that brings us to permits. So the first permit. This packets on wheelway tonight.
Here is.
Uh, to the tobacco license for Clover Vermont LLC, the no? Let's see. EJ, but everything looks fine.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget, approve the application for that.
Okay. Eric?
Second.
Second by Mary. All in favor? Hi. Motion carries four to zero, one absent. There. And then that's, that's the only permit for tonight, right? Thank you. Agree?
Yeah, they're stuck in the board of sewer commissioners, but
But that's, yeah.
Okay, for the solar board. That's it.
All right. I've got nothing under old business. So that brings us to new business. We actually already took care of that. So listeners reappraisal is the first item under new business.
Do you guys want to explain? You want to come up to the table and explain what you've done?
Three, two proposals for town wide appraisal. First law, about the state to real case.
Right.
Our finance committee asked us to push the reappraisal to 2025 completion 2027. So it'll be grand list year 2027. So we went back to our proposals and got new figures, new contracts from them.
Thank you.
So we have two for the townwide reappraisal to choose from. And we included them in your packet. One is NIMRIC and one is NEMC. Um, we propose that we go with the NEMC because their figure is set in stone. NIMRIC is reserving the right to change their figure in 2025.
Their price. Their pricing?
Their price, pricing.
So, yeah.
Right.
And the NEMC folks came and spent a whole day last week, went over everything, did a presentation, very credible. Tim checked their references. We felt like they, we could communicate with them. We could work well with them. Um, NIMRIC, on the other hand, was a little bit standoffish. So that
And just the, uh, NEMC stands for New England Municipal Consultants Limited.
Right.
Has an attorney looked at the contract, town attorney?
Now, we discussed this today, the three of us, and we were hoping that the board would just allow us to, the three of us, the listeners and myself, to take over this contract. It was great to go and see.
Oh.
Because I think I would prefer an attorney to
What?
Oh, it's kind of delaying that. We need to have this to the state by December 9th, right?
Correct.
It's a pretty straightforward contract that, um, you know, I think that they say we put forward. And, um, you know, the contract terms is usually a little less. There's kind of a I really put in different pounds, but I didn't play a role making this decision, the listener made the decision absent my involvement. So I didn't do anything.
Well, is the contract language, language they provided?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
There will be one on five. Uh, they started getting bid as far as there's more. It's not a lot, say, one way or the other. And right, right. It should be, you do.
Well, I'll make a
Yeah.
What, and what's the, what's, what's the?
Okay, I guess. New England Municipal Consultants.
No, I just look for the cost. Alright, so I'll make a motion to accept this, uh, not NIMRIC, but
NEM.
NEMC to do the appraisals pending a review of the contract by attorney. Like I just did, but we need an attorney. Appreciate it. We have a town attorney that can probably look at this relatively quickly, quickly.
And who?
Phil Dagger.
Why don't you, uh, also specify the chair, sign the contract so I don't have to get once we get the, uh, the attorney to
We could just have, I mean, take nothing to get the signatures. Once the attorney, I just live up the street. I can down sign it 10 minutes.
And so like tomorrow, we could send this to the town attorney. We would do that. And who would that be?
Phil Dagger. And if
Welcome.
Yeah.
So we also have, um, a contract proposal to do the Woodstock Inn Resort, which is separate from the townwide reappraisal. So we would, we also included that in there.
Is that the it's at the same, but that's a separate contract?
Right. Separate company, separate contract.
And who pays? We pay for that for Woodstock Inn?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Woodstock Inn.
No.
And who is the?
George San Suzy.
Oh, that's right. Yes. That's okay. Yes.
So George San Suzy is for the Woodstock Inn appraisal and NEMC is for the townwide appraisal.
Right.
Yeah.
And I talked to George today, simply had a question to ask, and whether there's any extra charges because of Woodstock Inn buying more property. And his return to me was, all residential things that Woodstock Inn all are done under the name reappraisal. As you were saying. Part of the, you know, NEMC. Right. However, the hotel business, the hill is set. It's an extra charge.
So if they were to buy more commercial property between now and 2027, there would be an additional charge.
Now they To us?
Correct.
For the updated appraisal or whatever.
Yeah. He was sorry when we talked about making sure an extra one changed the contract for 18, 1884 parcels to 2,000. And he said it's all included.
Yeah.
So now the contract is those 2,000.
That's on NIMRIC or on NEMC. Sorry.
All right. So going back to Bill Dagger, is the purpose is just to make sure that
Just to check the language of the contract.
Just to make
Just like we would do with any contract without an attorney to look at it.
It's
So we, we need
We have a deadline through December.
Yeah, just sure that if it may cost us more money to do this in 2027, I can play it and not going at that.
That question is anymore to do.
Well, you just said it being bottom of the property that would be
That, that
I think the in is on this, is on a separate schedule from the townwide appraisal.
No, no. We have them on the same schedule time wise.
Okay.
We're gonna do it all at the same time, 2025 to 2027. But if the, so NEMC is set in stone as far as residential goes. Whether or not we start it today or we start in 2025. But San Suski for the Woodstock Inn, they were to buy more commercial property. There would be an additional charge.
There's a reasonable delay at 2027, you know, by
Right. Yeah.
So we have one motion.
So we have one motion, um, just to have Bill Dagger review it, make sure everything's in order. But with the deadline of December 8th.
Yeah.
But well, our deadline is the ninth, so we need it back before the eighth.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Get building a couple, lease a couple days in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So that's a month, a little less than three weeks.
But I think that's enough time, right?
Yeah. And, and we, we email it. We don't
Yeah. So, yeah.
The problem is, he suggests change, then we have to go back to
Back and forth. Yeah.
Have to deal with it. So it can take, it takes some time. So you really have to have it back for the bill, I would say, in a few weeks minimum. So, Sydney, can you, can you take it over?
We can.
Well, all right.
If there are any complications, let us know. We'll have to have a special meeting or something.
Meeting. We also included our budget in that as far as what we project.
How we're gonna meet the trust of the we intend to meet the young population was the money we get on a yearly basis to stay, so we can deal with that.
Okay.
Takes, the money figures are in there. Yeah. Want to discuss now?
All right. So there's a motion on the table to approve New England Municipal Consultants Limited, for the appraisal with their contract to be reviewed ASAP by the town's attorney, Bill Dagger. And if there's anything that comes out of that to quickly resolve that, if there are any other complications, we'll have an emergency meeting of the Sikeboard. Can I get a second? Second by Mary. All in favor? Hi. Hi. Motion carries four to zero, one absent.
Thank you.
We'll get to, um,
But if anything
Yeah.
comes up, then you come.
We will.
Yeah. So now we gotta do the same thing for San Suzy.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, San Suzy to uh, appraise the Woodstock Inn, um, pending review by the town attorney.
Second by Mary. All in favor? Hi.
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 Thank you very much.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, so we got Two Rock. D-Rock's, uh, newsletter that is page
76. I think this is just included in the
This is
line item in the budget.
Yeah.
Under the select board dues and so forth.
Yeah. I don't remember ever doing this as a special article before. I think we can just
No, that's
we'll just budget it.
Yeah.
That's in a budget. So
Yeah.
So we, so I think we just let them know that we'll just budget it. They don't need to have a special article.
Yep. I don't know if they're asking for one. I think they're just telling us what our dues are.
What they, what they do.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. It comes out of the planning zoning budget. Right? Yeah. We'll make sure we pay it. And then Stafford Commons is looking for a modif, a loan modification?
Yeah, I don't know. Are you here to speak about that?
Yes.
Thank you.
You are, would come up? Thanks. All right.
Good evening. My name's Beth Long. I'm with Twin Pines Housing. I'm their CFO and Deputy Director. Andrew gives his apologies that he couldn't be here this evening, um, but he had another, um, planning and zoning meeting. Um, so we're here tonight to ask for the town's consent for I'm not gonna use acronyms, the Land Housing and Conservation Board to lend Safford an additional $58,000. So, um, back in 2014, 2015, when Safford was developed, um, the town became a lender to the Safford property, um, as an intermediary for a, um, community development grant, the VCDP, uh, Vermont Development, Vermont Community Development Program. So the way that works is that's, um, federal money that goes to the states, state monies that go to the town, and then the town, um, puts it into various projects which are deemed to be a public good. So, um, the town lent, um, the property, um, $995,000. Uh, Vermont Housing Conservation Board lent the property a million, $100,000, a little more than that. And so as lenders, um, Bar Harbor's also a lender, but they're a current pay lender. And as part of this additional $58,000, we have to go to all the lenders and ask for their consent. So this is money that will be repaid roughly 23 years from now, um, when all this money comes due. Um, the money was used to install a meter pit. The project was built in 2014, 2015. Um, Woodstock Aqueduct Company said, why didn't you put in a meter pit? And we said hmm, didn't, wasn't in the plans. And they said, we need a money pit, a meter pit, and you can't build anymore until you put one in. So we, uh, recently, um, finished four homeownership units there. And so we put in the meter pit that, that, um, Woodstock Aqueduct Company wanted at a cost of roughly $80,000. And, um, the rental properties portion of that is the 58, and VHCB is helping us pay for that. So we would like the select board's consent to allow this additional indebtedness to be added to Safford.
And then that includes no new debt for the, for the town itself, though?
That's correct. That's correct. It's just a, um, being a lender to agree for there to be a
So you
more loan.
You folks are responsible for the loan.
Yes. Well, at Safford
Yeah.
Safford Housing Commons.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Acceptable to me.
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve borrowing an additional $58,000 for Twin Pines Housing at Safford Commons.
So there's a motion for, it's Twin Pines Housing Authority. Is that who's taking out the loan?
Um, it's Safford Commons.
Safford Commons.
Uh, limited partnership, Safford Commons Housing Limited Partnership
Okay.
is the actual borrower. We manage the property. Um, the property doesn't actually have any employees.
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion carries four to zero. One absent.
That's great. I appreciate your help. Um, I, I'm embarrassed to say I don't know which one is the secretary. Can I leave?
I'm the chair.
You're the chair?
Yeah.
Can I leave that, um, for signature? And, um, I just have to deliver it to
Yeah. That for you to sign, Tom, or is that? No.
I, it's up to you guys who sign. You could designate the chair or whatever. Yeah.
Oh, great. I'm sorry. I don't know your bylaws.
That's okay.
Um, and while you're looking at that, I, I will, um, just say, we'll, we'll have a, um, press release we're issuing tomorrow. Um, we have purchased Mellish Wood. Um, it's the senior, um, housing that's across the street from Max Market. Um, I don't know if you all knew Jeffrey Nichols, but he passed away. We've been working with the estate. It's a very long process and we, um, purchased it and we're happy to be taking it over and we've, um, notified the local utilities and, and emergency services, et cetera. Yeah, we're happy to, to, um, be able to assist the seniors in town as well. So, great.
Thank you.
Would you send us a copy of that when?
Yes, absolutely.
Put it with his documents and follow along with.
Will do. Thank you for your assistance.
Thank, thanks for coming and explaining that.
Yeah. I understand. Thank you.
So now we have what's
This is the local emergency management plan.
I haven't looked at this yet.
Kind of a, I think it's, is this yearly or five years?
Well, that, five years.
Is it five?
And I don't think it's yearly.
Yeah, we went over this last year. The L and P threw me, but this is familiar.
Yep.
So we're looking for
I think there's two different documents here, the adoption form and then the actual plan.
Yep.
Our recommendation is to do probably motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the wording, right? Lamp? Local emergency management plan.
Yes.
And they, and
Ray made a motion to accept it.
Yeah, but we have to do two.
Yeah, but the first one will be for the plan and the second one is for the There's the municipal adoption and there's the Woodstock. Well, I guess the first one is for the municipal adoption. Yeah. Yeah. So motions for, um, the approval of the municipal adoption.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? No opposed. That motion carries. So the next motion will be for the town of Woodstock Lamp.
I will make a motion to approve the town of Woodstock, uh, local emergency management plan.
Yeah. Thank you. Second by Kerry. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. All right. So we're up to fiscal year 24 budget. Yeah, please. Um, this brings us over out of the pack and into this, right? Yes, and actually not. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Okay, that's right. I have an up, I have an updated version of that. It's very, very similar, but
I'll trade you.
Yeah. This one is tells in color, so the PDF. That's easier for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. If you have it, you can email, but you'll copy. Um, thanks.
And there here's these are the, the non, the black ones.
Yeah, these are the ones I mean, thank you.
And, um, Harry, my apologies. We've been trying for the last 10 minutes to email this to you. Actually, if you've gotten it from that one, you can follow along. It's very, very, there's only one substitute, there's one date that was changed and I can point that out.
Okay.
I think there's a page maybe that, um, so I think it may actually, the one you have may actually have been identical. So so this is the first of three meetings that we're, uh, hoping to have with you, potentially four, depending on, on the process. And we'll, we discussed the process with you at the last meeting. We'll go through it again. Today, we're not going to be talking about the numbers in the line item budget. We're going to be talking about improvements to the budget. I'll, I'll see, I'll show you. So if you can just flip to the next slide and you'll, you have the slides in, in your deck. You don't, um, I think you have most of the slides in the deck, just these little tracking slide that talk about the agenda I've taken out. So you don't have a lot of pages. We want to start with the key assumptions that go into the budget and give you a high level summary of the town budget, just a very, very high level. What are the taxpayer obligations? What, how, what's gonna happen to taxes if you adopt the budget as it is here? Um, you know, how much are revenues going up and expenses going up? Then most of the discussion we want to focus on is improving the budget. What, what can we do through the process of the select board decisions that you make to improve the budget? First thing we'll show you is the improvements that we've already made. We've been through every department. We've been through the line items. We've made, you know, dozens of suggestions. Not those, many of those have been implemented already. We'll show you it's been implemented. Some of those suggestions, many of them improve, reduce the expenses or increase the revenues. Some of them recommend increasing the expenses and, and a number of those have been adopted already, agreed to by the town manager and by the department heads. Then there are, and, and we'll talk to you briefly about a line by line review that you've typically done in the past, and we'll give you the line by line budget tonight. And you can take over the next week or so. We'll show you the schedule. If you've got questions, you can give us those questions and at our next meeting, we'll, or before then, actually, we'll answer those questions. Tomorrow, we'll give you a summary, uh, of the line by lines. There's, I don't know, 1,200 lines. We'll give you something for each department on one page, which takes the biggest line items. And it was the format that we showed you, uh, 10 days ago, where you basically have, if, if what you want to do is not go through 1,700, 1,200 line items and just see the biggest line items on each page, this report, which you'll get in the next day or so, we'll, we'll give that to you. And what we want to focus the discussion on are the, what we'll call new opportunities, which are the things that aren't And what we want to focus the discussion on are the, what we'll call new opportunities, which are the things that aren't in the line items. That we've got ideas and the department heads have ideas and so forth about how we could improve the budget. And we want to talk to you about those because you won't find those anywhere else. At the end, we'll just talk briefly about the use of one-time funds. We're not going to recommend using them or how to use them tonight, but we just want to tell you how much they are and then talk about the meetings going forward. So that's the agenda. And there's a couple of members of the committee here. It was Zoe, Tom and Jill, I think. And then obviously the department heads or some of them. Any questions about the agenda? Sure. Okay. Okay. So on the next page, the key cost assumptions. We've assumed with, with, on average wage growth of three percent. Now, there are some negotiations that may take place and that, you know, is in the future. There are, with only one exception, there are no headcount increases. And the one exception is a recent proposal from Planning and Zoning to restore half of a, of an, to restore half of administrative position that has always been there and just temporarily isn't. And then to add one person to expand the capacity. So that's built into the current budget. There's a healthcare cost increase built into the budget of eighteen percent. Which is, yeah, the actual increase that we have received was fifteen, subsequent to that assumption was fifteen point seven, fifteen point four, fifteen point seven percent. Which only takes us through half of F Y twenty four. And so we, for the moment, we've left the assumption in at eighteen percent for the full fiscal year. And then fuel costs of four dollars and five dollars, which is, I don't know when we made these assumptions, but they're pretty close to, maybe it's a teeny bit lower, but.
Some.
Yeah, so a long time ago. So it's, it's close to, you know, the, the prices I think are close to that. So those are the sort of assumptions that go into the, into the budget. On the next page, the town budget summary, and we've also got, yeah, just keep going. They are on the agenda. So we're comparing the F Y twenty four budget to the F Y twenty three budget. We don't have an F Y twenty three actual. We don't currently have a particularly good way of forecasting the full F Y twenty three. We will next year, we believe, but we don't yet. So compared to the F Y twenty three budget, the F Y twenty four budget envisions property tax revenue. You know, there's property taxes going up by six point seven percent. That's what's needed to pay for the expenses. And we're assuming special articles essentially stay the same. You'll see that two oh nine, four hundred, there's a slight increase in one of the special articles. We have not received the special articles. We have no control over the special articles. So we're assuming that they will stay the same. For, for now.
You have. It said that one, this, one has.
Changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, Zoe, do you remember? There's, there's one that changed, but it's just a couple of thousand dollars. It's from two oh nine to two twelve, but there was one, I think it was one that added for that. There's one special, there's one special article for three thousand dollars.
Okay, that was, yes, that, yes, that's right. That, that's what I wonder. Thank you. Yeah.
So we're assuming the special articles stay the same. And if they do, then taxpayer obligations. The way we budget, we budget property tax revenue and special articles separately, but in fact, in the end, they, they are, they just get added up into the tax bill. So if you adopted the budget today with these, with, with the numbers that we have, we would, we would need a six point five percent increase in the, in taxes raised. Now, we promised you that we would start talking about the tax rate, not just taxes raised. And we're not quite ready to do that yet because the tax rate calculation is complicated and we want to make sure we get it right. So we're going to try to have it for the next meeting, but I can tell you that so far, there's, in the last couple of years, the list, the tax, the grand list that is taxable after exemptions has gone up by about two percent a year. And if it went up about two percent this year, which isn't over yet, then the six point five percent would be, would go down to about five percent approximately. A two percent increase in the list leads to about a one and a, about a one and a half percent decrease in the tax rate. Sorry, the six, excuse me, the six point five percent would not go down. The tax rate would not go up by six point five percent. In other words, if the tax rate was a hundred cents per hundred dollars, it wouldn't be a hundred and six point five. It would be a hundred and five. So in others, the dollars would go up by six and a half percent because the rate would go up by five percent and the value of the grand list would go up by two percent and that would end, end up raising the money we needed. So the, and the grand list, according to the tentative interim calculation so far, has already gone up by close to one percent as of, as of now. So we can expect that the tax, that it will, you know, anyway, that, that, just so you know. And we'll be coming up with, with, with those numbers more officially, if you will, before we end this process. The other revenue is, is increasing significantly. So total, total appropriations are going up seven point seven percent. But in order to pay for those, we only need to raise taxpayer obligations by six point five percent. And this is just so you can see, these are the same numbers that we'll compare to, the same presentation we'll give to the trustees. You can see that this number is going to be higher than the village number. I mean, both numbers will change as you adjust them, but I, I don't think you, it's going to be hard to get down to that level. So that's kind of the overall summary. Any questions about that? Okay. Um, the next thing we want to talk about is improvements to the budget. And the first thing we want to do is to say what we've done. So what we've done is what you have typically done in the past, which is we've met with each of the department heads. Plus, I remember the department heads each met with the town manager and, and Zoe and went through their budgets back and forth. And then the finance committee then went through again with Zoe and the town manager there with each of the departments. And these are the changes that were agreed to on this page. We, we took about, we improved the budget. The first thing we did was improve the budget by about two hundred thousand dollars, meaning that we reduced expenses or increased revenues by about two hundred thousand dollars. And you can go over what these are afterwards. These have already been agreed to. They're being proposed. They're built into the budget that you're going to get when I give you all the, you know, the actual budget tonight. So all of these have been approved. I mean, it's proposed. At the bottom of this list, you'll see that in addition to taking out two hundred thousand of costs, we proposed putting in a hundred and fifty thou, a hundred forty nine thousand dollars of expenses. The largest one being adding a hundred thousand dollars to the capital reserve for major engineering work on the main. I presume this is the, is this sewer plant or the water plant? Sewer plant. Per the state mandate. I think we're nervous that, you know, that this work is coming. We have to do it. The state is requiring us to do it. And I suppose technically we could wait, but, but we need to pay for it. I mean, we have to start paying for it. So, so that's, so this has been reflected in the budget already. We just want you to know that we've been through and, and looked at things that we, that we thought we could eliminate and are proposing them. So you can go through these again at your, but all of this, we're going to be proposing that you take off and read. And you'll, you'll get the line, all, every line item and we'll give you the summaries. You'll get the line items tonight. You'll get the summaries tomorrow. And you know, over the next week, we're going to be taking questions that you have and, and so forth. On the next page, the red items are what we're calling, calling new opportunities. These is from, this is from a longer list of opportunities. The next page you have are more opportunities. In total, there's, there's about a million dollars here of opportunities to improve the budget. The ones in red on page five are the ones that we think are most important and that you should consider. And so let me just go over them briefly. And I think what we'd like you to do is to give us some feedback tonight, now. I mean, just discuss it. And which ones do you think you might be willing to approve? So that we can research them further and come back to you and make sure over the next few weeks that these are in fact doable. We think they are, but some of them have details. Let me use the first one as an example. Improve cash management, which could add about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars of interest income in F Y twenty four. This involves, it sounds simple. It involves moving our money from the accounts that they're in currently to accounts that pay a much higher interest rate, but are still quite very, very safe. They're cash accounts at, at institutions. I mean, Morgan Stanley is an example. I, we've just done this at an organization I'm on the board at. Morgan Stanley, if everyone knows Morgan Stanley, we've just moved four or five million dollars into that. We're paying three point seven percent interest. We were getting point one percent interest before that. The town on average has a lot of cash because, and this may surprise you, but, you know, for the, on November fifth, when taxes are due, we're collecting all the taxes, not just the municipal taxes. And we only have an obligation to send that money to the state after fourteen days. In those fourteen days, on the roughly, I think it's eight million dollars, Zoe, that we just sent to the state, that right? We earn, we, on those eight days, we can earn eighteen thousand dollars of interest. That's, you know, times two, because it happens twice a year.
Right.
And for the rest of the year, you know, we take in our money. We have a base load of cash that we always have. We take in our money. We spend it down. We raise the money again and spend it. When you add all that up, now, we think we should investigate this, but there is some investigation. Operationally, we need to make sure that the financial team here can operate by moving, this isn't, we're not going to get this from Mascoma.
Right.
Right. So can we operate by, you know, getting it from what I'm going to call a real bank? But a different bank, which, you know, and apparently Zoe has informed us that the last time we changed banks, it was a real headache or a real problem, whatever. So we don't.
Citizens, I think, before, right?
We, yeah, we went from citizens over to Mascoma.
Yeah.
So we're not going to do this if it's going to screw everything up. So that's the kind of investigation that we would need to do. I hope that you'll recommend that we investigate whether this is feasible or not. Um, the second one is controversial or a difficult decision, I think in a different way, which is should we use a collection agency to go after unpaid ambulance invoices? There's about four hundred fifty thousand dollars in available. We've said what, you know, if we could get a hundred, if we could get a quarter of that, it would. There's not.
Oh, God, no.
Okay, sorry about that, I guess.
So that's Medicare made, Medicare, Medicaid drawbacks. And that is the final price we can charge as set by the bet.
Okay, sorry, sorry. This obviously we misunderstood this time.
So what are the write-off?
So the write-off are unpaid bills, which is uncollected bills, which we can collect for, which is about fifty thousand dollars. Those are the ones we can send.
Okay. Alright, so this, this opportunity is one tenth of what we're saying. It's twelve, a quarter of that would be twelve thousand. Okay, well, that makes it, that might change our decision as to whether to investigate it because we know that this is problematic. I mean, Tom has had some experience getting a collection agency that didn't really collect anything.
Yeah, other, other boards have visited it in the past and it's not worked.
Okay, alright. So let's take this, well, I mean, I, you, you should take that into account. I can't speak to, I mean, all the committee isn't here, but if I were you, I would take it off the list. There are some, there are some savings that are possible within the police department. Robbie is not here tonight, so, I mean, I think I would wait to, wait for him to be here. But um, there are some consolidations that would reduce service levels, but could, but would save money. Um, and I think these are the two areas, basically consolidating some functions between the village and the town officers. Uh, and that would, I think, I think the savings comes from a reduction in headcount of one officer and eliminating the midnight shift, which would be a clear reduction in service. I, I don't, I don't know exactly how to, I, I think we believe this should be investigated. I don't know that the committee, I, I don't, we only have a couple of members of the committee here. I don't know that the committee said that we thought this should be done as much as we thought it should be investigated. So I don't think we have a point of view about this. Um, other than that, it, it's, you know, choosing between service levels and tax increases is your job. And so we wanted to make this bill. There are some things that if we had to cut the budget, we could do. Elijah has talked about, I think, like the least painful things. And one of these is delaying a dump truck purchase. Is that a way to characterize it? Least painful? Not, not unpainful, just least painful.
Yeah, unfortunately. You know, we discussed this some time ago and this truck is on order.
Oh.
We just got the um, approval from the bank for the financing, so we're not going to be.
This is already done. Okay.
Yeah, we're not, this is, that's not going to work for this year.
Okay, sorry.
There's that potential for future years for sure.
For F Y.
Fiscal twenty five.
Okay, alright, so we have to take that one off this list also. Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, it's alright because we discussed this last night and I thought this was a future truck. But I determined today, no, this is the one that, as I.
Already on order, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so it's too late to do this one.
Okay. Um, there are two additional police items that don't rely on, they're not reductions in service, but they're a different, so they would not reduce service levels, but they would, we think, reduce costs based on the use of vehicles. And there's, one of them has to do with a take-home cruisers model where police take the cars home and they think that that reduces the life of, of the, that, sorry, it increases the life of the car. And the second is sharing a cruiser between the village and the town rather than having two separate cruisers because there's a, you know, because there's a village legally and a town legally and, and they each prefer to have a car that's going to be identified as their own. Again, we're not certain about that, that these, that these reduce costs, but we think they may. And other towns have investigated these as well. So it's, we think it's worth investigating. There's no, there would not be a service. This is a cost reduction, not a service reduction. And then there's a few other items. There's also one potential increase that we think you should consider, which is the paving, continuing the paving program. In F Y twenty one and twenty two, budgets did, the budgets did put more money into road paving this year. They, there is some amounts actually for paving, but it's reduced, I believe. And so the question is whether we want to continue to, you know, continue to invest in that or not. So I don't know if you want to give us, if you want to discuss this, how you want to give us feedback. We've eliminated a couple of these things so that we could, you know. Do any, do you want to strike any of these off the list? Things that you don't, don't think we should do? Maybe that's an easier way to do it, other than the ones that we've already just struck off.
No, I, I don't think that they're just arbitrarily things that they had to consider them and discuss them.
Okay.
I'm, I'm curious how taking it home, the police boost is just going to save money.
Yes.
So Ray, um, you, because it came from a week, we just think that it should be investigated, seen through.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to know if the.
We're not sure. It's, it changes the usage pattern. We, it, it, the way he explained it very simply didn't sound like to us that it was going to save. It's sort of like, like you use it for twelve hours a day with two people as opposed to twenty-four hours a day with one. But there are other places that have done it. And I don't know, Joe, maybe you have some, do you have some knowledge about this or?
I mean, it's really common in Florida for town and county agencies. I mean, obviously the state does it. Every, I think every state agency does it. I think in the long run, it saves money. I think it'd be a sting upfront, but I think it would be worth investigating.
Okay. I guess the answer, Joe, is we don't know, but when, when the department head said this is something that they've been thinking about and that they were thinking about it in order to save money, we said, okay, that sounds.
I think if you do it with taking advantage of the municipal lease programs that are out there, that it becomes. That's when.
More attractive.
Become attractive.
Okay.
As opposed to just buying outright.
So I have no problem with investigating all these others.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe then just what, what you might want to do is look on the next page, which are the things that we didn't highlight. Some because they were quite small. And some because they were long-term. The biggest idea, which is, I think, is current, is David is, I would think, I think David, you would, is it fair to say you're perpetual, you're, you're perpetually investigating?
Yes.
Is providing EMS services to other towns. I think our conclusion from the discussion, David, was that this is definitely an opportunity that's worth your time to investigate. It's not something that we're likely to be able to put into the F Y twenty four budget.
So, yeah, I don't know, I think you'll see it in twenty five, of course, we have to get infrastructure and play all kinds of other stuff.
So this sort of is a permanent item on this list to be investigated, you know?
Continues.
Yeah, right. Um. Yeah. The other big item is that a few of the departments, you know, said in response to what would you do if the select board said you had to reduce your budget by five percent? Both fire and highway said, well, we would reduce capital reserves. And. Go ahead.
Um, capital reserve, that's. Their, um.
Their contribution to.
Yeah.
The future savings.
Yeah, and then. There's, there's.
Then the next year, we have a problem, yeah, they were not recommending this, I, I, they, they, in fact, it's on this list. If it's on this list, it means they were not recommending it, because it's not in the budget, these are all things that are not in the budget that's recommended. But they are. The, you know, if. I think we thought that our role was in part to give you choices. The department heads didn't recommend this, and we're not recommending it either.
Thank you.
Yeah. So if unless you send, you, you, you know, over the, again, you. Part of really today's meeting is really just as an introduction, we're gonna give you all the line items, you can keep this, if there are any questions you have about any, either of these two pages. Or anything in the light items, we're gonna ask you, I'll give you the schedule in one minute, um, you can, our intention is over the next week to ask us questions. So that the next time we come back to you, we can answer what, we can have all those answers ready, and we can, you know, um. You talk about whatever further improvements we want to try to make to the budget. Before we do that, just as a last step, I just want to share with you the numbers. Uh, of for the one time funds, I think you know this, but we just wanted to put it in one place. I just wait for, make sure Ray to make his notes, are you okay? Yeah, alright. So I think you know that the town has six hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty five dollars in ARPA funds. And the town unaudited is, looks, is looking like a surplus, and we don't think this is gonna change significantly. A surplus of, from FY twenty two of seven hundred fifty six thousand, seven hundred fifty seven thousand dollars, you can see the village numbers there. Um, just FYI, we have not yet reviewed the policy. Um, of, uh, for, for the use of one time funds. Um, which, which the Tom and the management team have proposed, and we will. Look at that for the next meeting, because we're gonna want to talk about these funds. The next meeting, but I don't, I think, I would say that the informal feeling of the finance committee. Was that we were not enthusiastic about using these funds. And injecting them into the FY twenty four budget, because there was such a significant. Uh, capital spending need coming down the pike. Um. I, I think also there are constraints on how we use the ARPA funds, I don't think it's a practical matter. And those constraints would constrain perhaps to some extent how we use the ARPA funds, we can't. And Tom was explaining this, I think, the other day, does it to the trustees, maybe, you can't just use the ARPA funds and say, reduce the deficit, you have to use them. For things that are in the budget, but there are things that are in the budget that we could use them for. The surplus is completely flexible, but I think that we, you know, i- i- in the future, and again, you know. What, what the finance committee can do in year two, in the second year cycle is different than what we can do this year. In the future, what we would be doing on a page like this would be saying, let's go to our ten year plan. Which we don't have yet, but we will, we won't have it this year, and say, alright, looking at our ten year plan. It looks like we could use this, we could use this surplus, this FY twenty two surplus. To reduce the tax increase to zero this year, but then taxes are gonna go up twelve percent within the next two years, right? Because of X, Y, and Z, and we could all see that clearly, and that's what you really need to make that decision. Until we have that this year, I think what you're gonna have to do is to imagine a long list of big projects that we know are coming. And to us at least, our consensus was, if I'm, am I correct in conveying this, our consensus was that we'd be very cautious about using this funds. In any significant way to reduce the taxes, but it's your decision, and we'll have that, we'll schedule that discussion, so.
I just want to interrupt.
Yeah, please.
A minute, just as a, a, a reminder to the finance committee, the trustees were pretty adamant about using, um. ARPA funds to eliminate their deficit, and, you know, there's a process to do that, but essentially it would. Be another, uh, reduction of that village number of two hundred and fifty six thousand by ninety seven thousand.
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind as we present to the trustees, they will likely say that's what they want to do.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, we're not expecting, yeah, our job, I think, is to recommend, but we understand the reasonable. There are reasonable points of view on both sides of these issues. So what we're proposing then on this schedule, and this, um. Is, this is a slight revision of what we talked about, it's the same principles what we talked about a week ago. Is today, we've given you kind of, we've talked about the opportunities and the risks. Um, we wanted you to decide on which opportunities we should investigate, you, we've eliminated a few, and you agreed that we should keep investigating the rest. Um, if you could, over the next four or five days, uh, email us questions. Um. Uh, that you have, we're gonna give you tonight the line by line budget, which you've always gotten in the past, the full whole thing, in fact. I'm not gonna give it to you yet, because Ray's gonna start analyzing it, I give it to you in one minute. Um, we are preparing the summaries, it's my apologies, my fault, I, I just. Didn't have time to get the summaries formatted for you tonight, I'll get those to you as soon as possible, but I think I should have them to you by tomorrow night. Um, the numbers are the same, it's just that the summaries are on one page, and, and they don't, the summaries don't show you every line item. They show you the top fifteen or twenty line items, and then there's an all other, so it'll show you eighty percent on one page, and the rest, if you want, you can dive into the detail. We, you'll have that tonight, so if you can, in the next five days, give us the questions, email them to Zoe. Zoe's gonna be the point of contact. Um. And, um, we will try by the thirtieth, which is before we're gonna meet with you, we'll try to answer your questions. Before our next meeting. But after Thanksgiving.
Okay, the thirtieth.
Yeah, it's after Thanksgiving, right? So, I mean, like, you know, if you send it, you can send us questions whenever you have them, if you have them past the twentieth, just send them. But, and we'll do our best to answer them, we'll certainly try to answer them by December sixth. And so on December sixth, we'll have another discussion, and we'll talk about any line by line changes that you think are interest, you're interested.
At the, um, the select board first meet.
I had, December sixth is our next.
Select board meeting.
Right.
Okay.
So November thirtieth, we have a budget meeting?
No, no, November thirtieth is just the day, it's just, we'll, we'll send you back the question, we'll just, it's all by email, we're meeting. Yeah, these are, the, the second column is between meetings.
Very good.
We'll just exchange emails, basically, we'll answer your questions as fast as we can.
So then we'll be at the, um, select board meeting for December sixth.
Correct, okay, on the sixth, you will have had your, hopefully, all your questions answered.
Right.
And then what we'll be talking about is, what ideas should we be using to cut the budget or to increase the revenues, or? What changes do we want, what improvements do we want to make to the budget? On the sixth. Um. And then. Joe, sorry.
Between meetings and December sixth and twenty. But sorry, we have to work on the budget, actually making it. To make the budget balanced, and the finance committee will review it, and then we'll be able to give back going to. Um, it was kind of meeting.
Got it, okay. And I think at that point, then, we would have made between us, between these processes, we will have made the changes that you want. We'll see, we'll, we'll go back to that summary, right, overall, if the, you know, if the special articles stay the same. And, you know, here's what the growth would be, by that point in time, we will have a rough estimate of what the grand list will be, or at least. Possibilities for the grand list, so you can see what will happen to the tax rate if you adopt that budget. And at that point in time, we will, I think by then, have a proposed policy. On the use of additional funds, which you can't, you and the trustees may or may not want to follow, you may want to have different policies. But we'll be able to think about, once you have, you'll be able to think about whether or not the pros and cons of applying. Some of those one time funds, so. We start the kind of the interactive process now, send, use Zoe as the point of contact via email, ask whatever questions you want, and we'll get that started.
David?
Yeah, I have five more questions, so you only have our head. And the board may not know that they're actually funding three thousand dollars, as you guys suggest, a substantial burden. By. You know, the way I do business. But you only have us in there one night, you should be putting it all on.
Yes, it all is being, absolutely.
Okay, you only have us down for one night, thank you for the question.
Okay, sorry, that, no, I think Tom's intent would make.
Yeah, that was.
That you guys are available, are here at every.
Yeah, I was just an oversight of the schedule, absolutely.
That, that's sort of my question too, the department head, um, give and take is important.
Yeah, David, we were very sorry, so attendance issue was resolved, but what, what, what do you do? There's a specific point you may want to just make thing invincible, and. Right now, but where's the, I meant the three thousand dollars. Well, that's just an example, okay, fine, sorry, I misunderstood, I didn't see that. Yeah, no, absolutely, I, I think that was just an oversight. You, Tom had expressed. The desire to have, sorry, have people here every time. Uh, Tom had expressed a desire to have the department heads here at every meeting.
Okay, good.
I've, nobody was opposed to that, I think. Okay, any, any other?
No.
Tom, anything you want to?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so, for Peterkin Hill, um. Dolores Gilbert had emailed us, so, because she was. Uh, felt that thirty miles per hour was not. Um. Was slowing up for appropriate enough speed limit for Peterkin Hill, uh. Unfortunately, because of the eighty fifth percentile speed survey that we did have done, we can't go lower than that. But if she, if she was the one that requested in the first place, and is not happy with thirty gives thirty miles per hour. Uh, and I did notify her that we'd be talking about this tonight, I don't see her on there. Um. But I think it would be. Um. Appropriate to. Can we revert back to the original ordinance, I don't know what, how the rest of the board feels.
You give it.
There's no new signs, we never even signed the ordinance.
And I would just save the money.
Yeah.
I think.
Just save the money, he said, so, you know, not put up thirties, just go back to thirty five.
Stay at thirty.
Or stay at, sorry, stay at thirty five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wait, it's, it's currently.
We voted to do thirty, um. It hadn't been circulated yet to, you know, enact the ordinance, um, for thirty. So presently, it's still at thirty five.
Are there signs that say thirty five?
Yes. Yes.
The email from Dolores Gilbert, she wanted it lowered to twenty five?
Yeah, she wanted it lowered to twenty five, but. We just can't do that. Um, we're, we're limited. Um. So. We could entertain a twen- a yellow twenty five on both ends. But.
At this.
They have to lower it. No, you can still leave it twenty five, you can leave it at thirty five and put a yellow twenty five.
But, but it does not import.
No. But. Um, and we can do it in two steps, we can. Revert back to the original ordinance that's as posted now, and in the future. Consider.
If, if we're not, if, if, we haven't changed the sign, why, why bother?
And if she doesn't have, I mean, if, if they're dissatisfied.
Can't go along thirty, so, right.
Yeah, we, the giant sounds were not changed, because there's a sixty day waiting period, so in that time period isn't going by, so.
And we haven't ordered the signs, right?
We have not.
Okay, so I make a motion to, we, we just feel in the way it is and. Think, uh.
Peterkin, so there's a motion to revert back to the twenty twenty one or whatever, the current speed. Yeah, twenty twenty. I think twenty twenty one.
Oh, alright.
But close enough to the current, to the current speed limit of.
I'm sorry.
Of, of thirty five miles per hour. You might be right, and.
Right, that, that's right.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Good, second by Mary, all in favor?
Hi.
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 You know, just curious, this is just kind of a point of organization.
Yeah.
Should we go back and amend the agenda since?
Oh, I did it at the beginning.
Oh, you did, I wasn't here.
Yeah, did, okay, okay, sorry.
Right here.
Yes, alright, I was gonna say, uh, without doing that.
Yeah.
And we.
Be a little.
Yeah, but I did also, this came up after the, uh, agenda was published, but I did notify. Dolores by email that we would be talking about this.
Yep.
So she's, so she knows that it was up for discussion.
Good.
Um, I have no other, other business, so it brings us to board sewer bathing requests.
Hmm.
We got.
Several of those, you know, I, I don't, is this typical?
No, this is a lot, this is, I, do you want to come up? Got them, yeah, hi.
Yeah, go ahead and explain.
Uh, so, we purchased, um, thirty seven through thirty nine central, which is. We have thirty seven central, red wagon, and RT home in that building. Um, in April of twenty one, and. Um, it's a little confusing, because the, though, that parcel was combined with. Um. Uh, O Com Tua, or Zoe's place, there was one, the bar behind us, and it was one parcel. Um, so we purchased it. And we paid our, our property taxes, um, they were joint, when we paid in like. November twenty one and April of this year, we got a property bill, tax bill for the property, but. The owner did not, the previous owner, Tucker, did not for the, the sewer bill to us in, in March. And the first thing we knew about a sewer bill was October. And the penalties and interests were up to. A three hundred, uh, let's see, three hundred and thirty five dollars in penalties and interest of four hundred and twenty two. Seventeen, um, so. So, yeah, October third is the first bill I ever got for anything, um. And, uh, so I don't. I mean, I would have, would have paid it immediately if I'd known it was there, but.
And I think you paid the balance.
And I did, I did pay the balance right away once, the, the principal, once I, I got it, so. Um, so I was hoping to see if I could. Get another part with. And I don't know why, even, we didn't receive anything in between, I'm sorry, in between, um. From April on to October, we didn't see, we, the first thing we got was this, that the October third delinquent notice. So. First, April, I know, we purchased it in April twenty twenty one, yeah. And then. Was that the twenty twenty one sewer bill? No, this is a twenty two, twenty two. A big question, I spotted that, but, good.
So did it? Alright. Go ahead. When did you receive this?
The first, the first thing I, we received anything was October third. Um, of, of, of this, of, I'm sorry, of, of this year, of twenty two.
So like last month.
The last month, and I, I was just shocked at like, oh my god, I, I, yeah. Yeah.
So. You know, based upon what you, what we, there's either two choices, either the listeners didn't make the transfer. For, or it didn't happen in the sewer billing account. That's the only explanation here. Either way, it's. A clerical error on our end.
Okay. If it's a clerical error on our end.
Make a motion for the interest and penalty right there. Interest. For twenty-two seventeen in penalty. Seventy-five, twenty-eight for clerical error.
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ray. To abate the interest and penalties. For the clerical error. All in favor?
Okay, thank you.
So next up is. Susan Chamberlain.
I think this one's a new one, isn't it? A new purchase?
It doesn't say when they purchased the building.
I'm pretty sure that's.
It's on page one oh two.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
It's on page one oh two, the explanation, when they, when this happened.
Yeah, this is the same.
They're asking.
To be abated a hundred.
Well, that and also to refund. Seven fifty-eight eighty-five. To. Is seven fifty-eight eighty-five the ref? The fee to them out?
No, oh, the six, six seventy-five. I don't know why we need to get in the middle of that. Because they should just send a check to the. Yeah. I mean, I'm, I don't mind. The, um, I don't know, eleven seventy-one, but I don't think we should get involved in transferring funds and so forth.
Yeah. They want to pay it.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to. Refund. Or bait a hundred and eleven dollars, seventy-one cents. To the clerical error. And not get involved with the. Transfer of funds paid. By the previous owners.
A second.
Okay, motion by Ray, second by Mary to abate one eleven seventy-one and to allow. The owner and previous owner to work out amongst themselves. Responsibility. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. With one absent. And that brings us to. Fifty-two Pleasant Street.
Yeah, this is the one where. The apartment. Or the garage is just part of the. Same sewer line and they're just asking it to be reverted back. For some reason, the previous owner had separated out.
Isn't this the one that has Abracadabra in it?
Yes, it is.
Oh. Yes.
So I wouldn't really say it rarely has anyone in it. I mean, it's going to rarely have anyone in it soon.
Yeah, and it wouldn't matter because it's all on the.
It's all on the same bill. Yeah, that's fine. So they're asking to have the bills consolidated. That would be the motion to consolidate bills at the one meter or one.
One bill.
One bill. Let's find, finally.
Consolidate the bills.
Okay, motion by Kerry to consolidate the bills.
I'll second it.
Second by Ray, all in favor? Any opposed? No opposed. Motion carries four to zero, one absent. Sewer permits for Middlesbrough sixty-three Pleasant Street Central. Thank you, sixty-three Central Street. That's page.
One oh five.
This is the one that's under construction now.
Yes.
Residential.
Converting to a five-bedroom. They'll put in a new sewer service line.
Five-bedroom, putting in a new service line, she said.
I've moved to approve.
A motion by Kerry to approve.
I'll second it.
Second by Ray, all in favor?
Have they paid the?
Assuming they pay all.
They have paid.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I see it, yeah.
So Mickelson is approved and Banks is for the green. Which is.
Yeah, this one.
Is that the, uh?
Right beside the. Yeah.
Yeah.
New business. And this is really a, a reduction that. They just need this to get their state permits. They're trying to get a, a state permit. That's why they're going through this process.
You're going to have. Deuce water usage?
I'm sorry.
You're going to decrease the water usage?
Yeah, that's what they're claiming.
But it's no longer a house, it's going from resident, uh, from apartment or residence to.
I think everything upstairs stays the same. It's just on the ground floor where they're just going to go to a, um. They're preparing the food, not there. So they're not going to have a kitchen.
So it's off-site preparation.
Yeah, yep. It's just going to be retail sales. I could see that changing in the future, but that's what they're doing right now.
Yeah, they call it the.
Yes, yes.
Sprinkles, but. Sparkles? Different.
No, I think that's the one.
It's splendid. It's right on the, yeah, over the green. They're looking, so what are they looking for? Approval to or permission to.
Just make the change, really.
In the, is it our, would it be our billing to them?
Actually, it won't change anything in the billing because it's all based upon, um, their usage.
So I guess my question is, what do they need from us to move forward with the state?
Just this, just this approval. Submit this to the state.
All right, so then I would entertain a motion to approve this. Commercial app, application.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kerry, second by Ray. All in favor? That motion carries. Okay, we've already done, for approval, Miss, we've already done number one, which leads. The minutes and then joint minutes of eleven.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from. Joint meeting from eleven one and a select board meeting eleven one.
Second by Mary, all in favor? Hi, any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Take a motion to adjourn.
You said, thank you, but I heard second.
Can I ask a question? Did, did you guys talk about my permit?
Yes.
I missed it.
We did it early on.
Oh, sorry. I totally. Did, I was on late. Okay, well, thank you. Yep. Well, we have to have that to have accessories and things. Thank you. I appreciate it. Take care.
Harry. I guess we'll make a PDF of this fine item budget and send it to you. Does that, will that work?
That's fine. Thanks.